We are all present with the exception of Jerry who tested me just a couple minutes late. So we'll proceed without him until he gets here. Would everyone rise, face the flag and so on, climb, join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I will embarrass this young person here who has never seen before.
Hi, I'm Emma Conway. I'm gonna be one of the student reps this year. Um, do you want to, should I do it now?
Um, we'll get to it, but uh.
Welcome.
You a junior, senior?
I'm a junior, yep.
You'll like her.
I like her already.
We should show us up.
We'll get into more formal introductions, but thank you for being here and welcome to the team. Um, any additions?
We do have some winter assistant coaches that Jake would like to get approved tonight if we can.
Okay, I guess that's new business, huh?
Sure.
We can add that as number four. Winter assistant coaches.
I got a question on number three. We're voting on acceptance to removal quotes, I thought we.
No, we're just discussing only.
Consideration to approve kinda means that, huh?
Yeah, kinda does, and then what we got is quotes attached, so I'm assuming that's what we were doing. But the last meeting was just getting data.
Right, and really that is, I don't know why Lori put it that way. Um, we can check with her, but we don't have it built in the budget to offer this year, so I don't think this is for this year. I think this is even a discussion for the following year.
Should we change that to discussion on the agenda?
We can, if that, yeah, we could change it to discussion.
Should we change number three to discussion of removal?
I would imagine the reason why was because eventually you'll want to not approve any, so that the vendors aren't out there wondering if theirs was approved or not. Down the road, we'll probably wanna non-approve all of them, you know, since you asked for bids equals to be sent out. It's good to get back to those companies and say, we're not moving forward with anyone at this time. Might even use one.
Okay, so three will be amended to a discussion item, four with the winter assistant coaches. Um, and with those two changes or and or additions, I'd like a motion to approve. Motion by Rob, seconded by Kurt. I don't have that simultaneous thing for. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Jerry? Schedule presenters.
Jennifer is at a conference today in the cities. She is going to present with you next time, August or October twenty-second. Um, she's got the data, she has sent it to me, I can even send it to you tomorrow, so you have something to look at ahead of time. But she's really excited to share those results with you and it's got a really nice presentation. Um, since she, um, her conference didn't get done in the cities, she couldn't make it back down in time. So we'll go ahead and have her at your next board meeting.
Okay. Reports and communication. Student board rep, Emma, you're on.
Yeah, okay, so um, for sports, uh, football on Friday, the Bombers won forty against Triton twenty-four, so that was pretty great. Um, on Friday, they're gonna play Caledonia at home. Um, volleyball, they had a pinkout in Zembroda, so it was breast cancer awareness. They lost, but they said they had a lot of fun, so that's good. Um, they have two home games this week, Tuesday and Thursday. Um, girls soccer, they started their playoffs and they won three to two in a shootout, so that's awesome. So they're gonna move on. Um, tomorrow, they play Mankato East, so that's pretty cool. Um, boy soccer is eight, the eighth seed, and they will play home on Thursday for their first game in the playoffs. Um, tennis started, um, they had their sections tournament today. Um, I think they lost to Lords, but they'll have individual sections starting next Monday. And then for activities, the musical has been practicing and their shows are November eighth through the eleventh. Um, tomorrow, the, some members of The Lantern are going to the state journalism convention, so that's pretty cool. Um, and then also some juniors are going to the male health career fair tomorrow. Um, on Wednesday, some juniors are taking the P S A T. And also on Wednesday is a P L C day where the school's going to do Alice training, which is, um, the new practices that we're going to do in case of an intruder in the school. That's all.
Oh, you're a pro already, you're nicely done. Now Jake has nothing to talk about, that's always the joke, that the A D, you can summarize things up nicely for them.
I think Mr. Hobbs just got shortened a little bit of the Alice training, you were probably gonna speak to that as well.
A little bit.
Um, who are you sharing time with this year?
Annegys, so we're gonna do every other month.
Yeah, I think you've had them both in church before.
I, I talked with the girls about, instead of doing every other meeting, doing every other month, so that one person doesn't have the pleasure of sitting through the financials every month. Thought it would be better if they both got the experience with that.
For the call. Okay, thank you, Emma. Board committee reports, does anyone think, does anyone have anything for the cause?
Staff, staff development met today, sorry, I have no voice. Um, they were talking about how, um, they had a really successful beginning of the year speaker, top twenty it was called, training, um, which focuses on culture and atmosphere and in the schools and everything. And it kinda enhances their, um, program for behaviors, um, keeping it real. So, um, it just enhances that and they're talking about possi, the possibility of bringing, uh, another speaker in like mid-year to kinda, just kinda re, um, re-ramp up everybody and, you know, 'cause it gets you so excited for the beginning of the school year, but then to do it again mid-year maybe as a, as a good just reminder and good way to, you know, see how things are going. Um, so they were talking about that and they, they had some really neat things, I'd, I'd like to learn more about it, about that they're, you know, the wordage they're using in the school, like keeping it, are you above the line or below the line? I really liked the way that they were explaining how it, um, how it works for behaviors and just the overall thing. We also talked about Alice, um, they have their drills this Wednesday, um, at the high school, middle school. I think it's pretty cool how they're gonna do it. Um, they're gonna do it on the P L C day and they're gonna have every hour, they're gonna be talking about a different scenario and, um, I just think it's, it's, sounds like it's been going really well and the kids have been really taken well to it and, um, and that they all feel a little bit more secure in their spot in the school, so I thought that was really good. And that, that's about it.
I can piggyback on that, just so you guys all know, just a little bit, we had a nice parent meeting at the elementary and we had about twenty-five parents that attended, um, if you count the parents that are also work there or whatever, but eighteen for sure parents and some students and things and had great questions and I thought it was a really, really nice meeting and some follow-up. Especially at the elementary, it's kind of a scary thing to think about your preschooler having to learn about, you know, intruders and things like that and, um, so I, I thought the parent meeting went really, really well. We're gonna do some follow-up with that after the kids have been trained and, um, maybe do something at the end of the year with that as well.
Um, yeah, we got a curriculum committee meeting this afternoon and, um, pretty much the highlights there is there's basically, feel free to jump in anytime, guys, grant money that's available, one is for youth skills training. And that is, um, that would address job skills in manufacturing and there'd be a program which would involve Cannon Falls, Zembrod, Goodie, uh, and Cannon and Wanamango Lake City, those programs. And basically it's to address students that wanna, um, from the time when they graduate that they could actually go into, um, some sort of manufacturing of some kind. It would address OSHA ten, which is the safety, beginning of safety training for people manufacturing. Um, just so that once they're, uh, once they leave school, they can actually jump into an occupation if they so choose right away. And feel free to expand upon that.
The only thing is they could also work during their high school career.
Yes.
And for a job, they could be on this, getting these skills while they're getting paid. It's pretty remarkable, it's part of that youth skills training grant that we received.
And it'd be what, one time a week for six weeks and three hours at a time?
The, the OSHA ten plus soft skills starts actually October twenty-second, I believe. It goes through the beginning of December, so that's six times, three hours a day on Monday, or on Monday evening. And then the next part of it will be, um, up to, up to two forty-hour kind of O J T sessions at different manufacturers where they can earn ten, ten dollars an hour, so they make a little bit of money while they're doing some, some manufacturing training and learning some skills there.
One thing I didn't ask about that, Tim, is that two forty-hour placements, so it's two places for forty hours, you don't jump from one to the next to the next?
Correct, yeah, so, so students will be able to choose which manufacturers they'd like to, like, like to go see.
And then the other one was the rural advancement academy club, is that right?
Uh, rural advanced manufacturing academy.
We'll get it enacted.
And that seems, that's interesting too, it's a partnership between, uh, the school districts and trade schools. And there's only several schools that could be involved because, and that's down in Chaska, Chatfield and here. And that's because of the equipment that we have as well, we, we qualify for that. Where you would also go ahead and you start building up, uh, credits for either when you come out, you could work up to two years' worth of credit, so if you want to leave and work with that in advance and you could go to someplace that would recognize that, or you could apply it towards your college career, you know, advance and place it that way, so again, this is all new to me, but.
The biggest thing on this is it's P S E O without losing any of the funding of students that go P S E O. They are able to go to college and the high schools don't lose out. And this is really another part of that Haley, um, you know, the task force that she was on. Why are we punishing high schools for kids that wanna get some college credits? And so, um, this is just the first step in that, and if it's successful, I think it'll grow into other areas as well.
Really great thing about, um, this academy pub thing, um, they gotta come up with a better acronym for it, is that this is really open to any type of student. It's not, this is not pigeonholing a kid who's gonna go into a career after high school or go to college. Um, this program is being designed so that any kid can go into it, get some certifications and some skills, um, that would let them go into a job right away or lead into further education. So there are lots of jumping off points along the way for kids and at each one of those points, they'll have something, some type of accreditation or credit that, um, they can use to further advance themselves.
Seems pretty interesting. Anyone else have a committee report? Moving on. Administrative board reports. Is this, uh, just our week? Elementary school, we have.
She, again, she's out too.
Yep. Um, middle school, high school, Tim, anything for us?
Sure, uh, we had, uh, I guess it's a couple weeks, is it a couple weeks? How long ago was homecoming?
Two weeks.
Yeah, two weeks ago, uh, we had homecoming, it was one of the best homecomings I can remember here in the school. We did things a little bit differently this year. Um, instead of having a little bit of celebration every day, uh, we saved our celebration for Friday and Friday was a, was a activity day and a pep day for us. And, um, you can ask Emma what she thought about it, but from the students that I talked to really liked it a lot. We had different kinds of things that kids could do, we started off our day with the talent show, which was as fabulous as it always is. I'm always impressed with the, you know, kids that get up and sing and, and play and do all kinds of great stuff. Um, we ended our day with a pep fest, um, and, you know, had a great homecoming game we won and a great homecoming dance. So it, it was a, really for me, it's gonna be a memorable homecoming, 'cause it was just all around an awesome day. Schools clicking right along, uh, we've got our first conferences next Monday and Tuesday from four to eight here at high school. Uh, conferences will be in teachers' classrooms and I'll be sending out some information to parents later this week with a little, uh, page that tells everybody where teachers are located and giving some suggestions for some questions they might wanna ask at conferences. And believe it or not, we're halfway through the quarter already and things are going really well, so.
Community adding activities, Jake?
Piggybacking there, uh, this is our last home week of regular season events, just crazy, fall season, regular season's done after this week at home. We got some teams on the road next week, but, um, hopefully get some home playoff games, so it's crazy how fast the following for me as well. Emma did a great job recapping her teams. One thing I wanted to update the board on is working with, um, Aim Electronics on a scoreboard proposal to update a couple of our fields with some new scoreboards, so, um, working with Aim Electronics to come up with a plan where we look at selling some advertisements to help fund those scoreboards, so we'll pull up on them. Talked to Rob a little bit about it, 'cause I know me and I have talked about advertising in the past, so hopefully in the next month or two, I'll have a little bit better of a plan to come to you guys, show you kinda what I'm thinking to get, um, at least a football scoreboard, a football and at least one soccer scoreboard, maybe two soccer scoreboards for down at elementary school, so. You see now, um, like in, in the gym and down at the football field, we do have some companies with their signs on there and we don't receive any revenue for that, so maybe look, look to take advantage of a chance to get some revenue off of our scoreboards. Some other schools are doing that, um, Sturgill just did it, um, Good U has done it and I know some other schools are doing it too, it's become pretty common to do that, so. Um, and then I guess the only other thing for me is Cannon Kids, uh, we have a new coordinator down there, Erica Paulson. She took over August first for us, uh, was doing a very, very good job. Um, she just really jumped in, has done a really nice job with that program so far. But I did wanna recognize Katie Jensen, she's been a preschool teacher for us for the last about three or four years. Um, she was looking forward to working about two days this summer, but when our coordinator took a different job, she really stepped up and went above and beyond to take care of Cannon Kids for most of the summer, so that's about what I have.
Any questions?
Well, um, Jake, just, um, I had some people talking about with the, the soccer that there's just no place to sit on the fields if that's ever something that might wanna be looked at.
You know, I, I would love to get some bleachers on, I've looked at it, the, my only question and Dave can maybe help me too, is there's not a lot of space between those two fields, so I'd be afraid we put those bleachers there so they could go flying into the sideline.
I was supposed to do them at the ends.
Yeah, that's an option. Turn in the fields, I don't know if we can still get two fields in there, turn them, so then.
To be honest, we've just never had crowds like this, I mean, it is packed all the way around. There's some home games where you can't even find a place to pull up your chair, I mean, they're, they're just full. And, um, especially boys games, they, you know, they have so many people playing down there at once, but it's a, it's a packed house.
We did put a third field down there too, up above, we purchased a third set of goals and put a third field down there too, so.
Okay.
And we'll have three games going at once.
I just remembered one more thing, someone had mentioned a handicap toilet or.
Tim Langdon mentioned that this morning, we do have accessibility to the school, uh, but we can, we can order one next year, that's, that's no problem.
Yeah, yeah, um, thanks for mentioning it, I didn't really think of that.
Dave, what do you think about the seating, you got any input on that?
Um, it's, the only way we're gonna be able to get seating is put the teams in the middle of the fields and put the bleachers on either end, which then there's plenty of room. The way the fields were designed is the irrigation and the junction boxes were put in between the fields, so the players wouldn't hit them. So if you move the field any other direction or relocate them, it's gonna affect that layout. But, um, putting teams in the middle and putting bleachers on either side, uh, is an option to be able to put seating in there. Um, or on the ends like was mentioned, um, and up top, really there's room to do anything you want on the top, on the top field.
We would be using those portables, I would only assume, and that means running back and forth between fields. Well.
Oh, I was thinking.
There would be a way to.
I've looked into trying to get like a five-row set of bleachers that can stay there or.
Like maybe behind what's at the soccer, or I mean, the softball field here? Kind of like a smaller set, um, that could actually stay out there. But, um, I mean, that is an option too, I mean.
Be a lot of running around for you, that's just what I was thinking.
Well, and there's games the same nights.
Yeah, I know.
And the cost of those bleachers that make it from the ball field down to the sports, they're pretty expensive, aren't they, per unit?
They're very expensive, yeah, they're in excess of fifty thousand.
Like those little five-room ones, the permanent ones.
That's like a way a machine ship that can make.
They're thirty thousand.
I don't know, what do we, we want trucks driving back and forth in that, I feel more than they already do, you know, I would say probably not.
If they're all possible, no, especially with that kinda weight and the size truck you need to pull those, try to minimize that.
Try to pull a lot of the other, they would be disastrous.
We put, we put people in charge of that that'll give us some answers. Okay, head of operations and maintenance, Dave, you have anything for us?
Uh, yeah, facilities wise, uh, the cul-de-sac project's on its finishing, finishing stages, uh, dirt's being put in, they'll get grassed down pretty soon, uh, so that's wrapping up. Weather's been, and the storms have been a big factor. Storm wise, we're kinda, um, still in the process of assessing everything that happened with that big storm on the twentieth. I'll be meeting with the insurance company, uh, this Wednesday to address some issues. But, you know, it should, that's gonna be a process, so we're kinda stumbling through that and documenting and making sure we have pictures of everything and, I mean, we still got trees we gotta clean up and everything, so. Dealing with all that from the storm still, and, um, we did get a, an employee back, so we have another custodian on duty, which is really nice. And, um, he actually kinda stayed on staff, listed as a sub, and he came back full-time again, so that's really good news for me and my staff. He, he's a, he's a great employee and, and we're very happy to have him back.
I just wanna compliment our, our insurance company, it's been wonderful to work with. You know, doing everything they can to help us out and walk in Dave through the process as far as, you know, all of the, uh, so much property damage, those kinds of things, I think they've been really good to work with.
Good communication. So, yep, they, they called me again today, we have a meeting set up for Wednesday and we'll get together and try and iron some of this stuff out.
One of the concerns I think we all had when we went out and inspected that cul-de-sac as a, as a group here was the narrowness of the entry in and out back there, has there been, have you observed anything with your cameras and stuff? Are, are the kids going where we want them to go?
It's far exceeded my expectations at this point, even without having people out there. You know, it's not done yet, lines aren't finished, cones are still up, sidewalks, um, you know, there was dirt and stuff all over, so we're not, we're not at the completed stage, but no, I, I would say all in all, just for an overview, it's, it's gone fantastic, it's gone very, very well. A lot of folks are using the south side of the building where we have it designated for student pickup. They're actually, um, double-laning that and continuing to move up. I do have additional signage on order that will be able to help that a little bit too, so, um, I know I've been pleased, I've had some other administrators out there with me, um, I think it's worked, it's been working out quite well. And the street side's still not even finished yet, so I expect it to be better and better, so I'm very happy.
Good premiere perspective, Tim?
Yeah, um, I spent the first week or week and a half kinda just monitoring after school and, um, was pleasantly surprised at, um, the number of people who are reading my, my weekly email, 'cause that's kind of, our first communication with that was through my weekly email that I send out and it's in there, the diagram is in there. And parents are doing what we're asking them to do, which is great, so. And, you know, we'll all have, always have situations where some people will kinda do their own thing and there's nobody monitoring, but at least when we're out there, it seems like people are doing what we're asking, so.
So we plan on monitoring that continuously then, or what's the plan?
No, I haven't.
Shepherd Center?
Yeah, Shepherd Center.
Are they gonna be going out there and monitoring that?
Um, we just switched over, um, Teresa Johnson is now in charge and it's the Cannon Valley Senior Center. Um, they don't want us to call Shepherd Center anymore. Um, so there's been some kind of changes and things going on, um, we'll be meeting with them again. We just, uh, we just recently met with them as far as, um, what was that meeting on? Uh, rental, um, and space and facilities and things like that, so. Um, we will be looking at that, we're also looking at them to work some of the winter shifts again, kinda watching the, the field house and things like that, so we'll be looking for volunteers.
Any other questions? Okay, moving down, technology, handout from Amy, I don't know if anybody, everybody had a chance. If you can do any reviews or any elements you might make on.
Email her if you have any questions, she's, uh.
Okay. Uh, Soup, your report.
Uh, for my report tonight, I thought I would take some time to just, um, make sure that you have up-to-date copies. Um, I'm gonna pass these out to you, uh, the five-year plans. Um, as you'll see when you see the technology one, I know this has come up quite a bit, there's no increases in the next five years on technology, um, except in the case of, um, I built in two percent in wages because we have to build something in, um, so you'll see that on the top line. Um, but I think that'll be important for you to see that we have not increased that. The transportation vehicle, um, thing has not changed, we're kinda staying with the plan. Transportation will meet closer to the end of the year to decide if we're going to replace vans or things like that. So anything you see in green is kind of up in the air, it'll depend on when transportation meets and when we review that. And then the last five-year plan that is on here is operations and maintenance. This one is a little more fluid, um, you'll see kind of the wish list and the items that we think are important in the next five years. Obviously, there's things that are gonna come up and that's built into the top portion of the budget. But I know that this was last year's goal and I really wanna keep this going, that you will always have an up-to-date five-year plan. Uh, so we took off fiscal year eighteen, added on fiscal year twenty-three, um, and just built it out. So I think this is important, we started this process and we should continue to do that. So I'm just gonna pass that out as a part of my report. Make sure Nora gets one, if she wants one. Yeah.
Where is it?
And again, it's not overly important, but I thought, um, it's good for you to always kind of see where we're going. I know that goal is done, um, as far as my superintendent goal, um, but I think it's really important to always kind of have those five-year projections, um, so we know. I, I know, and Rob can probably say, for transportation, it has saved us. To have a plan in place of when we're replacing what has made a tremendous difference. I think in the area of technology, showing that we are not gonna change anything for the next five years in expenditures. Um, if anything, we showed a thirty thousand dollar reduce this year, we may look at again, um, this spring at doing that and, and we, we can do that. These, these documents are fluid and can be changed, but I think if we don't have a five-year outlook, we just don't know where we're going. So, um, I just wanted you to have an update on it at the beginning of the year. And that was my report.
That's you. Any questions for Beth? Okay, moving forward, public input. Anyone wishes to speak to the board with regard to anything relating to our school, to our policies? Any questions you might have, now is your time. Moving on. Action items under old business, we have nothing. Under new business, consideration to approving annual assurance of compliance.
And I'm sure you all pre-looked at these when Lori sent you your packets or your online. Um, I have it up on the screen right now for you, um, just so you know, all school districts must complete the assurance of compliance with the state and federal law and verified mandating reporting by November fifteenth, which we have done. We also must go through all the federal laws and the state laws that are required by the state. And you can see these up here, um, I know you got these ahead of time, if you have any specific ones that you wanna go through, we can. These are mandated, uh, there's not really any of them that you can say, no, Cannon Falls doesn't wanna do section five oh four. I mean, we have to do all of these. But if you have any questions or wanna understand any of them more completely, I can certainly help you with that. But otherwise, my recommendation is obviously to move forward with these, they're the law, we have to follow them.
Okay, commission to approve. Motion by Brenda. Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Jerry? Moving on, consideration to approve the eighteen nineteen and superintendent's goals.
Okay.
We started on these, we started on these in probably July and, uh, as you all know, that's, this is part of the, uh, part of the procedure that we must follow and, uh, uh, we did put in some effort on it and then, uh, situations have kinda led themselves to not dealing with it until right now, so. There's probably some who would need to be reminded exactly what we're dealing with here.
Sure, we can review those. Um, we have down performance goal number one, to review contracted services and own services. I personally think this is a, a great goal, I think we should always be reviewing food service and transportation and like tonight, just looking at, um, the difference between owning our own equipment and, and, you know, going out for those. So I will keep track of those as we go throughout the year. Um, curriculum and technology, the superintendent will work with the tech and curriculum to align and integrate technology and learning standards and goals or outcomes. They will meet twice a year to ensure accountability, uh, we will actually be meeting quarterly, uh, we decided that tonight and Tim will be sending out those dates and then provide staff development on tech. Uh, we have eight of those built into the school year. Um, the teachers will stay after an hour after the, the school day to do those, but, um, I will be giving you a summary of each of those evenings and what the teachers have learned. Next one is O P E D, this is a very realistic goal, we're at the end of it and we need to keep moving forward. Uh, we've already made some steps in the teacher negotiations to sunset some of the clauses that were in there that would prohibit this from moving forward, we have that in place, uh, so I'll be walking you through a levy on this. This'll, this'll be very standard, uh, but for most of you, the first. This'll, this'll be very standard, but for most of you, the first time you've walked through this, so I'll take you through that. And obviously, the indicators of measurement on that one will be a successful levy on that, but we'll get that in. And then the last one is personal development. Continue to develop communication with staff through positive leadership meetings with department heads and teacher surveys. I think, again, this is a really good goal too. Something new I'm doing on, I think it's the fifteenth, I've set up a date with all of my supervisors on just payroll and how we're signing time cards, and you know, who, if, and when OT is ever appropriate, like an overtime situation or something like that. We're gonna have some of those meetings because of this goal. I think it's important to find some of the items that we're kind of struggling with, and some of that is payroll. Some of that has arisen through our new payroll. We had Jamie hired on as payroll, she has resigned, and so now we are with, back with Kathy home for one pay period, and then we'll be going with Shelby.
Stephanie.
Stephanie is her name, and I have not met her yet, and she's very, very experienced in this area, but has brought forward some ideas that she has, and this'll be a part of that, so. That's just one of those examples, but this one you'll be getting a lot of feedback on as well. So those are the four goals you've come up with me, for me, for the year. I think they're very appropriate, very attainable, and very important for the district, so I'm good with them, it sounds like you're good with them. We'll move, we'll move forward. I plan to give you kind of an update of where I am December or January, whenever Laurie tells me I need to give you an update, and then at the end of the year as well.
So if we can back up, like performance goal number one.
Sure.
Do you have anything in mind how you would attempt to achieve that or attempt to go for that?
I do, we were just at the Mesa Conference, and I went out to one of the breakup sessions, just like, it'll probably be one of the breakup sessions at your MSBA conference on food services and what that entails, and different companies that we could do that. I think that's really important to look at that. We will be looking at custodial, just because Dave is having such a tough time hiring staff and what that would look like. I still believe in-house is always the way to go if you can, there's a lot of merit and value to that. But if we don't check other services, I think we're doing a disservice. Transportation is another one we really need to look at, we're still struggling with the idea that personnel is all in one area. I would say that Sharon and I are spending far too much time, right, on personnel at the bus garage. It has, it has grown into a significant part of each of our days, and so we need to look at that a little bit too. Owning our buses, maybe we need to take back the personnel and hire someone to do that on staff versus contracting that out. I don't, I don't build that for sure, those are just options. Working with Andy is wonderful and tremendous, and he does so many great things for us as far as the mechanic and those kinds of things, but sometimes reviewing those open up new things, and we should know what those things would cost us and things like that, so. That's what I'm thinking, I'm thinking food service, I'm thinking custodial, I'm thinking transportation, I'm thinking some personnel type things, those things are always good to look at.
Number two, I wonder if curriculum or tech people can address this. We did have some discussion on this, and we feel sometimes, I think, that we were kind of running parallel when there should be more integration of the two, but I might be wrong?
Yeah, I think they kind of go hand in hand.
I do too.
And that we talked about, maybe we should at least get together for both, both groups and just, you know, talk about things that might be important for both sides, because I don't know if, I think you have to run both together to really get an idea of where you're gonna be sometimes with, you know, curriculum and technology, they're two closely related, that, you know, I know we're gonna meet quarterly for curriculum, but is there something where we'd wanna, at least once or twice a year, together?
Well, I know that the admin team agrees with you. We got together at the beginning of the year and kind of put up a spreadsheet and shook everything up, who's going to be running what department and who's going to take on what. And we've got some really strong skill sets in our administrators. You know, Tim has a background in technology and those types of things, so he's gonna take on curriculum and be able to tie in that technology piece. We are changing a few things up, and, so I guess where I'm going with that is that we actually agree with you and think we would like them to be better aligned too. It'll be interesting to see how this goal transpires, I think this will be my most challenging goal, but probably the most rewarding at the end. I think it could do some really nice things for the district, so. We'll see, but Tim, don't you think that the admin team, when we discussed this, everyone felt?
Yeah, it's so.
Felt like they aligned that as well?
That's, that's why I was sending out the stuff about technology, because I'll be running both committees, so.
So even before I saw this goal, I was already making those changes. We kind of just erased our current, what everyone's doing, and we said, okay, where's everyone's strengths? And Tim does have a strength with curriculum and just, and technology, and his method of communication is really good, and so we just thought that that might be a good change there too. So even before I got this goal, we were making some of those changes, and I think you'll see some positive things from it, I really do.
I think we also talked on it just a little bit today, again, at the curriculum committee, just the informing, just to the board, you know, how is, you know, now that you can be bringing on some math curriculum, how's it working? How's it working with the WeTech or the iPads one-on-one initiative?
Oh, remember this year, we didn't buy curriculum, that was a reduction, so we won't see that this year.
And it doesn't have to be that. I would say just for anyone in general, let's pick math sometime and say, hey, how's it going with that? How's it going with, with science, you know, and just feedback to the board of how everything's going with the one-on-one initiative and the programs that are out there.
Right. Mm-hmm. It is, I will say, can be difficult. Teachers are really tired, they do a long day, and to have them come back, even though they do get paid to come, it is difficult sometimes to get educators to come back in the evenings, a lot of them coach, I mean, they're working long days and correcting papers at night and things like that too, so that has been a little bit of a hurdle, but I'll continue to work on that.
I'd like to see.
Sure.
The OPEB, if you can just remind us, we had a ten-year levy, and at that time, we weren't required to go to the taxpayers for it. Now, the OPEB, the OPEB fund is about $100,000 a year that we put into the retirement so that it doesn't come out of the general fund.
That's correct.
Now we're getting into, are we beginning year ten?
No, you've got this year and then the following year, but you'll wanna be prepped, ready to go for this year.
So refresh me on any changes that were made. For a while, we were gonna have to go to the taxpayers for this conversation again.
And we'll have LRS come in, they'll be kind of our guide. Obviously, you want your financial institution to walk through that, make sure they're doing all the paperwork for us. They plan on coming in around February to run through all of that and kind of do a work session with all of you, so that you fully understand where everything's at. We just had another training session on it as well. You can levy that without necessarily going to the taxpayers, but obviously, you wanna try to levy as low amount every year we can, because we wanna save our taxpayers as much money as we can, so.
And keep that very informed.
Mm-hmm, and the hundred thousand a year has worked out really well, so I would imagine you'd go for that same amount, where a lot of districts are having to increase it because of different benefits that other districts have been giving out, so, yeah. But everything is in line, we've got, I guess, the language in the contracts, all of the steps that we needed before that are ready to go, but others will be in to walk, walk everyone through things.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the eighteen, nineteen soup goals.
Motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the goal, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Next one, discussion of snow removal quotes. Who wants to begin this conversation?
Well, I'm gonna turn this one over to Dave. Again, this was just really for informational purposes only. Dave worked really well with the people that were putting in some of these quotes and things like that. It is not built into the budget for this year at all, that isn't a part of anything that we had talked about, so I'll turn it over to Dave, but you talked to both the companies that put in these quotes, correct?
Yep, I spoke with the two.
Or do you wanna go over the summary of hours first, where we got to that?
It doesn't matter to me.
Why don't we start with the summary comparison, so that you have the hours first? Josh was nice enough to put this information together for us. I believe you have it in front of you as well, correct?
Yeah.
So it shows you where we bought in-house equipment, it shows you the previous amount that we contracted services. He did go back to 2010. In 2014, when Dave started, he started kind of buying equipment as we went, trying to reduce that cost, I think he did a really nice job with that. We got the Kubota, we did get the used Ford plow truck, we did get the Kubota loader, and then we got a different, we got two different loaders in two different years, is that correct?
No, we just have the one loader, and then we have the smaller Kubota, and then we have the one-ton plow truck.
Yeah, and that's what that one slash three must mean.
Yeah, is it payments?
What's that?
Is that payments?
Um, no. So that equaled $118,000, and then at the very bottom, the estimated in-house snow removal hours. And I will tell you, this was a little hard to do. We went back through time sheets, and we contracted Bruce's time and Max's time, and then you gave your best guess on your time, correct?
Yeah, just guess, and then we had Rick and Josh Stevens and a couple other custodians that periodically were in there too, so it's, it was a best guess scenario.
Well, we figured we had to put something in here, so that you could have something to look at for hours, and so that was the 2015, 16, and 17 years. So Josh put all that together. Do you have anything to add to that before we get to the actual quotes?
No.
And with that information then, we did get quotes, and I'll turn it over to Dave from here.
Well, we got a couple quotes, obviously, the one quote, that was the lowest quote, is Anderson, who also does our lawn care, which I actually thought was a really good quote, to be honest with you, but, you know, we had to get some type of pricing. We were always planning on reviewing where we were at with snow removal and how do we move forward, and that's why it was originally brought forward. So now that we put some numbers together, found out where we're at, our equipment's , you know, going on two and three years old now, and, you know, I guess, I'm just looking to see what direction the board and, you know, facilities wants to continue to move in as we go forward.
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't sure what we were prepared to do this evening on the snow removal. When you go out and get quotes, it almost feels like you're moving in that direction, but we, do these people know that we're more in a fact-finding, or are they under the assumption that we're possibly making decisions on snow removal?
I don't exactly know what they think.
Somewhat confusing for me, and it looks like we're pretty consistent from the first three years showing here, we're in that, well, the next, the four years, we're in at about $50,000 per season. Then we have at least a couple of years where we ramp up, if you will, by buying equipment and then maybe supplementing that with some help that we needed as well. What are you thinking here, if we can just cut to the chase? You're prepared to do this for another year because it doesn't look like you have many choices?
I guess that answers that.
Well, you know, I guess my concern is here is, as we move forward, I mean, we really are, we're not budgeting for, you know, equipment replacement, upgrades. I know, Rob, you had brought up a concern that we had about the excessive ice that we've had on the parking lot, those kinds of things, and that's really why we wanted to bring this up and figure out, okay, are we gonna continue to add to this fleet to be self-sufficient? And if that's the case, great, but then we need to kind of start planning for that. We need to be able to get proper ice, things for ice, and possibly an additional truck or, Kurt, I know you had mentioned about having a piece of backup equipment in case something goes down, which I couldn't agree more. Simple things happen in the middle of the night, folks, a simple hydraulic line getting pinched, you're done, you're shut down, you're out of business. That's why I wanted to bring this up when it was still 70 degrees, rather than bring it up when it was 10 below, two feet of snow, and I have two pieces of equipment down. We've had great luck, we've had great equipment, I'm very happy with everything we've purchased, it's worked out very well. I just don't wanna push my luck without having a plan in place.
So when Rob talks about ice and such, where are we gonna go with that? Is there any, anything to discuss? Are we at least showing a piece of equipment that we might purchase for that purpose? Are we just gonna wing it for another year?
Well, without having anything budgeted for that, then I guess we're gonna have to wing it, but I think we need to plan for moving from this day forward. I think the proper equipment needs to be here, and the whole, the first three years was a learning experience. Where were our shortfalls? Where could we improve? Where could we make it better for public events and making sure the students and staff are getting in safely? And that's a big one right there. We do have some equipment that will do some of that sand and sultan, you know, those kinds of things, but it's on a smaller scale. We're finding out with the amount of square footage we have and with the time that we have to be ready for the doors to open, we need to look at upgrading. We need to, we need some bigger firepower out there to be able to accommodate these needs, and we need to start planning for it, if that's the direction that we're gonna go in.
And that deadline would be March, when we start building the budget for the following year, that's, that's March, so that if we're gonna plug that in, we need to be able to do that, and that's why I'm always talking about this five-year plan, like the plan I handed out tonight. Those things can be incorporated in, and I think I said it twice, this is a fluid document. Those things can be added in, it's just expenditures and revenues need to match, and so by March, I need to know, I don't even know what a piece of those equipment costs, so those types of things need to get to me, and then I can build that into that five-year plan.
Did they give you any adders if they do have to salt and sand?
Um, yeah, I believe in the bid sheets, there was an add to for that.
Not in our information, but.
They both inquired about it, and they were gonna make it an additional line item.
Because I know, in the past.
We were paying an average of $600 per time for one sanding and salting. That was, that was our average price for one time through the parking lot.
In the past?
Yes.
Curious to see what their one time through the parking lot this, rather than the year.
And because we were just kinda, you know, looking for numbers, and we still have that capability, even if we were to go that route, I would probably push the board in the direction of getting that equipment ourselves. I think you would save a significant amount of money and have the efficiencies of doing it in-house with something like that. That's not a big time thing or a big labor thing, if you have that kind, that particular equipment.
What equipment, are you talking about sanding equipment?
Yep, sander.
What do we sand with now?
Kubota, 10 cubic yard.
Okay, you wanna upgrade to the one that fits in the back of the one-ton?
Correct.
And if that one-ton goes down?
That's why I need a backup truck.
You can back up the backups in the backups, it's still not gonna get you out. I mean, you either gotta have to suck it up or you're gonna have to go outside where they back it up, or if you have a backup with a vendor.
Well, we do a lot, you know, we do all the preventative maintenance on the equipment, can something happen? Yeah.
And you can do it.
It can always happen, but, you know, then, then you have to call a contractor or get someone in here to get it taken care of, so it's not an impossible task if you break down.
Right.
And part of the reason I ask is, if I'm looking at these numbers and I'm looking at our average cost, I don't really, we have to have those folks up here significantly a lot of time for us even to break even. Unless the look at is wrong, right?
No, I don't think so.
I mean, we're, at, at what we have for a number here to do the elementary playground, middle school, high school, and the bus garage, for what we're spending, you're average-wise, you're thirty times.
If we're paying per service right here.
Right. And, and to me, I think it's, I guess, I know when winter comes, it seems like we're falling snow every day, but I know that's not the reality of it. I'd be hard-pressed to guess any winter that we had, snowfalls thirty-plus times.
But keep in mind, those hours are hours that are already working. You don't, you don't save those hours, that isn't above and beyond, they're forty days or forty hours a week.
But the overtime costs are.
The overtime costs are.
I think it comes down to.
Those are minimal.
It's a significant number, though. But still, otherwise, it's a significant number.
But we can have a lot of, I guess it depends on the two-inch days, two inches, you know, we have a lot of two-inch days, it may not accumulate, so does that mean that if there's two inches, they're gonna be there? So then we're obligated to pay for, well, two inches, we're gonna come in, we're gonna clear.
So then we're obligated to pay for, um, two inches, we're going to come in, we're going to clear out. And that's... They'll do that every time. Because then it could accumulate pretty quick.
Two inches or more, correct?
Right.
That would be their contract, correct?
So I guess I'm... We could have quite a few of those days.
We have 30 two-inch snowfall days, for sure.
30?
Oh, for sure. But two inches?
Yeah.
What are you budgeting for this year?
I didn't budget for anything because I... Dave was doing this. We budgeted just for the overtime that we've...
Okay, so, and that's my question. So right now, you're budgeting for...
Staffing and personnel time.
$3,100 was last year's overtime.
I actually put in six, just to cushion myself, just in case extra hours need to come in. He's short personnel. So I was assuming that current staff more would have to work overtime.
So your budget is $6,000 for the parking lots, plus sand costs, salt costs, and fuel costs?
Last time he got that for $600, he got the stack, the sand that lasted all season.
Okay. So then fuel costs?
Yeah, there's costs.
Right, well, no, I'm just looking at, what are we budgeting? I know ours is one, but we're going to have to budget.
The fuel goes into the transportation.
So if transportation pays for that? Okay, okay. I'm just trying to get a handle of what we're in the budget for versus what options we would have.
Snow removal, I'd get down $6,000 staffing.
But have we ever looked into leasing equipment? Or did we lease any of this equipment that we had before? Certainly reduced our costs when we buy buses. Would we be able to buy equipment on a lease? And...
I believe those, yeah, they have equipment for schools to lease for the winter months. I believe that is an option. That would be something that Josh would probably work into.
Lease, he means own them, but just pay payments on them, not rent them. Lease, lease, we would own them.
I'm sure there's those options, yes.
How about, how about Dave? I know, like Kubota, if something goes down, they'll lease you a skid loader or something like that. So if a payloader goes down, is that something that is feasible or durable?
Sure. It is feasible, durable. The only problem is, is usually that happens about 1:30 in the morning. So, but if it's, if it was something where you were having a problem that day and you saw some snow coming up, the vendors that we've worked with over at Nieber, they would run something out immediately for us. They've been fantastic. They've always have been there. And to be honest with you, have given us the equipment when we needed it. So, great, they've been great.
What piece of equipment, what would it be, Dave? What's your biggest need on equipment?
I think another pickup truck with a sander in it.
And that being said, is this something, I'm going to just be honest about it. Is this something you think you can manage or you want to continue doing?
Well, I'd like to meet with the facilities committee and look at the numbers. And that's why I brought this up, so it wasn't a surprise. So that's why we're discussing.
Are you comfortable with, snow comes in the middle of the night, you coming in to do this stuff too? I mean, it's a commitment.
Yeah.
You're okay with that and you think you have the staff to do it?
I don't, I can't, I don't know about staff. It's a tough thing for me to answer. No, no, it's a tough, I...
Because that's, I guess we need to know that too. Do we have the personnel to do it? So that next year or the year after that, are we still going to get the same situation?
Well, and as of right now, yeah, we do. We're okay.
We're okay.
Yeah. But I'm just, the future, like you're saying, I don't know. And I mean, I think Rob mentioned it too. We can have all the new equipment in the world that we want. But if we don't have the butts to put in the seats, we're in a bad spot. And I agree with that.
Would it be best to go back to fully, I mean, we did this for three years. If we could sell the equipment back, is it better to go back to fully?
No. I disagree with that. I think if you do anything...
I'm asking, there's, we're talking about all the different options.
Yep, and going off of that, my thought process is that if we do, if we do contract it out and we have a contractor come in for these bigger snowfalls, we now don't need to rely on the staff. Or we don't have to beat up our own equipment. And we don't have to plan to budget for the replacement of this equipment as soon as we would if we were using it full-time. We still would need the equipment because we're going to still cut those costs that we were getting previously for the call-ins, for the stuff two inches and under, and the cleanup and the moving in the snow. We still create a savings by having the equipment. Not to mention, we're able to maintain our parking lots a lot better because we have the equipment in-house. So it's not only the cost savings, but it's the making the district safer and more accessible during events and during other things because we have it in-house. So I think getting rid of that equipment would be detrimental. But looking at possibly contracting it out and still doing it, we're still going to get the savings without the call-ins. We can still probably do the things like the ice and salt and sand. We can do everything from two inches and under, just because that's the kind of the contract we... The possible contract we threw out there. But we're also not looking at, hey, every two or three years, we better think about a new truck. Or, and every six years, maybe we got to look at a new tractor. How many years are we going to get out of the smaller Kubota? Being we use this equipment all year round for everything from unloading semis to the maintenance on the entire property, so...
But if we call them 30 times, $1,600 a time, that's a significant... I mean, that's a huge budget.
If we look at the past where we called our last contractor in at two inches and over, it was nowhere near 30 times.
What establishes that parameter of two inches? But why not four?
The only reason we were going off that is speed. Being able to do it with just a couple guys quickly with just two inches. And that was the previous contract prior to me starting. That's what they had in there.
I think two inches is what's plowable across city. And anything else that's property management, if you had two inches, you got to plow under two, you don't touch it.
How many hours on the Kubota now?
I don't know the exact hours. It's actually getting the oil changed and stuff right now. I don't know what it is.
I have an idea of how many.
Well, I guess my, I like the path you're going on. I was thinking of it before. Why don't we look at, what, how many inches are you comfortable moving with the equipment we have? Four inches, six inches? Anything over six, we contract? Anything under six, we take care of? What would that do, the dynamics?
I don't know what it would do. It's a good question. I don't know what it would do to it.
We're locked into two, I think, because again, that's industry standard. Two inches off parking lots, start to get plowed. But you can do two inches. You can do four inches, maybe. But where is that threshold that says, you know what, that's too much for my equipment? Now we'll create the contracts, we'll call them five times.
I think that threshold is created by the fact that you're going to have, you're going to be hard-pressed to get a contractor. That's going to be that minimal.
Don't know what the way is.
Just my, just my two cents on it.
I understand. No, they want all the business. But sometimes someone gets better than others.
Yeah, and, yeah, that's a possibility. But these guys also try to determine how many other jobs they can get.
I know, they work, yep. And I think it's going to be $1,600. But again, I'm looking at, how do we balance this tightrope of, do we take care of it in house? Or do we not take care of it in house? If you're saying you can't handle foot snow, what good is not having any contracted services if you can't handle it, period? Or do we find a hybrid that would work both ways? If we've done it with the buses, we've done it with a few things. But it's always worth the question. You might be surprised what they find, what you find out.
Sure, yeah. Question doesn't hurt.
And for the record, I can handle foot snow.
Just so you know, he has for three years. I mean, we got that nine inches in crazy fast time. We got the lot done in time for school. So I just want to reiterate, this isn't built in for this year. I appreciate very much that Dave is bringing it forward. We're talking, it's again, that five-year plan, looking at things ahead of time and not bringing things in as crisis mode. So I really appreciate what Dave is doing. He has his own budget that I think he is going to look at a sanding-type system. And I don't know what those necessarily cost. But those are built into his budget that has already been pre-approved by you guys. If anything goes over $10,000, you will see the purchase of that here. If he decides to go the avenue of a truck, you know, we'll go through our fleet services. We'll have transportation get involved in that because it's actually part of our fleet. Dave has a lot of input on that. But the transportation department has to be willing to take that vehicle on. We have a new mechanic now. He may have a preference on Fords, Jevys, you know, we don't know how that all goes. But I think what Dave is doing is exactly what we're trying to do here, is build things out in the future instead of frantic mode. You know, he's not waiting to March to come to you. He's saying, I have a need with salting and sanding. I may use a part of my budget to make that happen this year. But in the future, we may need to look at some contracted services. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yep.
So I have a question there. So the money that we're saving with doing it in-house, where does that money go?
We've moved that, we've kept it in the facility budget. Things like preventative maintenance, the PM system that was requested for the HVAC system. It's been moved around. Instead of having to just pull that out of nowhere or increase or decrease a budget somewhere else, we've been able to take those savings and move them in. So they have not left facilities. If you look at your five-year plan, it actually has increased more. Those savings are built in there. And that's the only fair way to do it. If we save in food service, you know, Jake shouldn't get those benefits. If Jake saves something, we shouldn't move that over to, you know, Fund Nine or wherever we want to move it. It should stay within that program. It just pays for other things. So as you can see, Jake's budget has increased, even though his staffing has decreased. But he's spending a lot of things on preventative maintenance, which I think is good.
I know in the past, some of the money that he's saved has been utilized towards new equipment.
It has, that's true. And we can do, that's why I'm saying, if he wants something built into next year's plan, we'll alter that five-year plan when we sit down and have facilities. We'll move some things around. I got to tell you, if that dishwasher at the elementary makes another year, that frees up $43,000. You know, those types of things. Well, that might get him a good truck and system that he's asking for. That's why I think it's good that he's bringing it up early because I just don't want anything to be a crisis anymore. I just want it to be planned out. And I think we're in a good place. But I just wanted you to understand that you've already pre-approved a budget for him. He may choose to do something with that funds, those funds this year. But you'll see it if it goes over $10,000.
Just one more question. Dave, that Kubota, can that be used, the UTB, can that be used for anything outside of just what it's used for hauling and stuff right now? Like, you have a push-paw on that at all, just for sidewalk or anything like that?
We have a 72-inch V-plow on it. We also have a pneumatic brush on it. And we have a 10-cubic-yard sand-salter on it. So it takes, basically takes care of all of our sidewalks and all of our paths back and forth to the elementary. And it truly works like a dream. It's been a fantastic piece of equipment.
So are we charging him with anything to do before here in March? We just allowing him to come in with his basic needs? And give us some numbers sometime before March or sometime after the first of the year? But...
It's going to be a 2019, 2020 budget item, isn't it?
He may, he may come to you with something this year, the sanding and salting. He and I have talked about a little bit and putting that in his, this year's budget. He might be able to do that. He saves a fortune. Where do you buy your salt and sand from?
I just get it in bulk from the...
Yeah, he gets it delivered. It's just remarkable what he's saving on actual product. You get a sand and he built a little shed over it and it protects the sand. And even those savings, he deserves to keep all of that. He's doing such a nice job of saving us money. It's not like it should just move over to Fund One. And so we can look at a few things. I know he and Josh have talked about a few different options as well. So we'll see if he comes to us with a vehicle, it'll land in transportation. If he comes with other things, it'll land in facilities. And we'll go from there.
So item three then was such a discussion I had, was you, Adam?
You got here late, sorry. We moved it over to discussion three.
I think it makes sense to move forward with, move towards that idea of accommodation. With an outside service for over two inches. Maybe we can ask them to, if they would consider upping that to four inches or something like that. And look at the pricing, but keeping, you know, now that we have the equipment, keeping some of the service that we can do ourselves.
And I think these quotes are still helpful because maybe we want to move forward with just an on-call. Like, let's say something went on, you know, that backup plan that Rob was alluding to. Maybe it isn't every time there's two inches. Maybe it's when the snow falls exactly at 6:00 AM versus 3:00 AM. Maybe, you know, you've built a nice relationship with these gentlemen. Maybe that's what it is. It's an on-call kind of thing. Do they have that available? They don't like it. They don't like it.
Once again...
Right.
Even, even...
For business.
If nothing else, like the salting and sanding, because it freezes so fast. It melts and freezes so fast that you guys can't, there's just no, you don't have enough time in the day.
Well, and you're limited too on when it comes to what time all this happens. I mean, it's been weird the last few years. We've gotten several winter days where it's raining. And then freezes. And then the wind picks up and then it snows.
You can see the sand blowing across. It's not even doing anything.
So and I know they have a schedule to keep for their customers. But once they get caught up at that, if we have a need, what would it cost to have them come and hit the parking lot?
We could definitely have that discussion as a, as a backup or on-call opportunity. And everything's a possibility and it never hurts to ask. Absolutely.
Have, have one cost. Could we stop using sand until we're salting a little bit more? Or are we still using salting parking lot?
It's a mix. Mm-hmm. You have to. You can't just use just sand. You could, but I don't think it'd be as effective. When you have that many cars driving over, it creates such a, even the black ice on top of the regular ice, you got to have something to break that down. And also that salt doesn't track into buildings easily. It dissipates and kind of breaks down. Where sand doesn't, it tracks straight into your building.
I just want to end this conversation with truly, and we're not forgetting what winter's like. Dave is here at 2:00 AM. He's here at 3:00 AM. The minute I call, snow, anything, he's, he is my second call. First call is the transportation department. Second one is him seeing how he's getting through this parking lot. It is not unnoticed what he does and the hours that he spends working above and beyond. So it's just, again, shows how he's thinking ahead instead of the reaction kind of thing. And I'm really impressed by that. So thank you.
Predictions for this winter?
What's that?
Any predictions for this winter?
Which, I'll give you the old one or the new one. Depends on how much snow we're going to get.
I'm going by the squirrels.
Eighty-six inches.
There's been a lot there.
It's cold this winter.
Seventy and something.
Okay. Let's move on to winter assistant coaches. Jake, what did you handle this? We have some approval work coming up for dance team only?
Yes, this is dance team only right now because actually by the next time we leave, dance team will have started. So you'll have at the next meeting, you'll have the rest of the winter assistant coaches. But these are dance team only, just to get them ready before they start their season.
Can you beat up the names? They don't have a list.
Yep, the four are Leah Bennett, Katie Lynn Borchardt, Chelsea Lacrum, and Kelsey Byssell as a volunteer. Those would be the ones that we'd be looking to approve this evening.
And they will, like a few of our other sports, they have two assistant coach salaries. So they will split them up and I, they might use a little bit from the Booster Club. But they do not go over schedule. See, I have not received that money yet.
How do you know how many, when dance starts early like this, how do you know how many athletes you're going to have?
Yes, yeah.
So what would happen if you were down 10 dancers?